And he shot hard at that thunder last week. Ready Beth?
Ready.
Okay, we'll call the meeting in order. Have roll call please.
Del Meyer.
Here.
Eastling.
Here.
Clinkhammer.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Rice.
Here.
Okay, we'll start with citizens input. Anyone wish to address the council?
Hello, um, of course you guys know Kathy Canfield, twenty-four seventy-three Radford Road. Um, we are concerned about the ugly dirt pile next to our house. It has been over three weeks since the house was demolished and are left with a big hole and nothing has been done ever since. Wondering if and when it's going to be grassed over. We are also requesting in writing how the city plans to protect our property from the road. You verbally promised to us that trees, fence, and et cetera would be put in place. We are afraid by the time the road is completed, there might be a new city council that could change the way our privacy, our security, and the noise control for our property. As we have observed over the past year, the city council does have a tendency to change their minds. If the city council would have allotted the money spent on the Meadows Golf Course, the city could have easily put in a second roundabout and not disturbed our neighborhood. The second roundabout would have benefited more people over the golf course ever will be. We hope to hear from you soon on our request. Thank you.
All right, anyone else? Okay, well, start with the consent agenda. Anything for separate discussion? Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
I'll roll.
Clinkhammer.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rice.
Aye.
Del Meyer.
Aye.
Eastling.
Aye.
Consent agenda approved five-zero. First, new business is resolution one-twenty-eight, twenty-twenty-four. Resolution approving agreement with Managed Solutions Systems for updated managed IT services. Um, we have Kurt and Michael from Managed Solutions. Who want to, guys want to give a quick Reader's Digest version of what we're doing here?
Hey guys, Kurt, do you want me to take it or do you want to lead it off?
Go ahead.
Hey guys, um, so Jim and Beth tasked Kurt and I and the company to go through um, how to improve some of the security features based off what they were currently doing today. A lot of that has to do with some of the things that the users do through their email. Um, so, um, we'd be taking over the email that we currently don't manage, adding in some security features. And the more in-depth you want to go, Kurt can answer any questions around that. Um, doing things proactively, uh, testing users to see if, um, bad actors can, you know, trip them into clicking links, things like that, things that you guys have probably seen through other cities. But, uh, like I said, Jim and Beth have been very proactive on making sure, um, they get to the forefront on some of those things to limit the damage that could happen. Um, and then there's some other improved services on things that we're doing today that just, um, needed a little bit more size. I summarize that all right, Kurt?
Well, that's good. Thank you.
You want to, uh, just touch on what the added security features are and what, what they will give us?
Sure, yeah. On the, uh, the security side of things, um, we're going to improve things on the backup for Microsoft three-sixty-five. Um, we're also going to provide security awareness training for all you, all of your users as well. Um, like Michael said, um, doing simulation emails as well as, um, ongoing trainings on the latest and I don't know if you want to say greatest, uh, security threats going on in the world. Um, and then we're layering that in with some, um, email protection, um, that has more phishing protection built into it as well as, um, a, a service that will look at the Microsoft three-sixty-five tenant as a whole and, um, alert and can, uh, do some automatic remediation as well if bad actors are able to get in or, um, get bypassed some of the security, um, that is going to be in place.
Thank you, Kevin.
How long will it take any of these changes be implemented? How long would it take?
Uh, we're estimating about six weeks, um, from agreement signature to everything being completely implemented. Um, there is some, uh, work to be done to migrate the email, um, from the current provider, uh, GoDaddy over to, um, Microsoft with us. Um, so that might be a, an issue, um, but we've, we've, we've done that before, so I don't, I don't see a problem. It just may add some time. Um, but we expect, I, I've padded that six weeks, so it should be done earlier than that.
Will we have any downtime because of that?
On the email side of things, no. Um, there, uh, we'll do a cut over at night. Um, and we will help the users the next morning to, uh, get logged into the new, um, three-sixty-five for everybody, um, to the email and everything. Um, there will be downtime associated with the firewall replacement. Um, but that will, we'll coordinate, um, with Beth on to make sure that we're doing it at the slowest time, if not after hours, if necessary.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Do you have anybody else that, uh, currently uses this setup as a, as a reference?
We do have, um, other clients that are using very similar setups. Everybody's a little bit different. Um, we don't have a, a practical package that we provide to every single client that we support. Um, but this is pretty typical, um, especially these days as far as, um, security packages go. Uh, we're seeing a lot of companies, um, not just municipalities and such, um, asking for the security improvements um, that we've detailed here. And this is, um, the work of a lot of, a lot of, uh, due diligence on our end with the vendors and such to make sure that we're putting together the best package and the best foot forwards for our clients.
And which version of Windows is this based on?
Uh, this will support Windows ten and Windows eleven.
Okay.
Um, and Windows ten is going end of life at the end of October next year, so, um, we will continue to support things, you know, after Windows ten has gone end of life as well.
And then the licensing's a government G three, which includes a an improvement, I think, on what currently is being provided today.
And one last question then is, does this plan include any insurance that there won't be any problems? Or what kind of, what kind of warranty do we have that this is going to work? Or if there is a problem, how do you guys handle that?
If you find somebody's going to guarantee you're not going to get hacked, let me know because.
I, no.
We won't be in business long, I'll tell you that. But, uh, we will say that these, these are the most published, um, items right now. What we do do, or we are able to do very quickly, uh, throughout our whole client base is, like Kurt mentioned, that everybody's the same, everybody's in different journeys. But we do invest in products that are in the backend to, if Microsoft makes a, an announcement on a a change that needs to be made, we can make that in one click across all the client bases and not have to touch every single one individually and have to remember if we did it or did not do that. So, we also score all our Microsoft accounts um, based on their baselines that they put out there. Obviously, Microsoft moves the goalposts every single month. So your score could be twenty-one months. It could go up the next day to twenty-one. It could go down to nineteen. So, we've got things in place to make sure that the tenants are all being scored against what Microsoft says is best practices. And you should, with these types of services, you should be above what they, they advertise.
And one last question then, Beth, is this, is this, uh, an annual contract or is this over three years? Or how length, what's the length of the agreement?
They're quoting us.
Okay.
Yeah, the costs will be split across. They're all paying on per user fee, whether they have a full user, a mobile. Your accounts will be covered by this. Each department will incur their, their percentage of the users. They'll control what level of service they get.
Thank you.
Kurt, you had something?
Uh, yeah, my, my question was, um, I was going to ask Jim, how does this look to you? This is your wheelhouse, IT stuff. I'm, I'm a moron.
I'm the one that's been pushing for it. I've been.
Okay.
I really got skittish after the Dyersville, U County thing.
I can't imagine why.
I mean, we, we met with the bank. We, you know, we've been, this has been in front of our minds for quite a while now. It's just a matter we. This isn't ideal, I mean, in terms of the fiscal year, but I felt it was important enough and I was, you know, pretty adamant with staff that they needed to find in a budget to, to accommodate this cost because I don't want to be in that situation.
Thank you.
And Kurt, as you say, Kurt has come out to, at Jim's request, to speak to users about different things to look out for in their emails and that general education in the past as well.
Will city council be involved in those, that training?
If you'd like, yes.
Okay.
All right, any questions or have a motion?
I was just looking at this with backups. I mean, there's three times a day. That's all remote. Is it in the cloud? Where are we, where are we going? Is that, or is that local?
Those backups for the, the three times a day is, uh, all cloud-to-cloud backup. So it's backing up the Microsoft three-sixty-five data that is already in the cloud. We are going to store it in a, another third-party cloud as well.
Okay, thank you.
Have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number one-twenty-eight of twenty-twenty-four.
Second.
Motion to second. Any final discussion? Question? Call roll please.
Clinkhammer.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rice.
Aye.
Del Meyer.
Aye.
Eastling.
Aye.
That's approved five-zero. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, everyone.
Park board appointment. Sarah, I don't know if you wanted to speak to this. I know you, you interviewed candidates and, and this was your choice.
Yes, the park board went through, um, six candidates and picked Amy, and I think she'd be a very good choice.
I have a motion to.
So moved.
Second.
Question?
I just want to say we had six qualified people coming before the board. They were very interested in the position. I think this Amy is going to do fantastic.
All right, thank you. All in favor?
Aye, aye, aye.
Opposed? Approved five-zero. Resolution one-twenty-nine of twenty-twenty-four, a resolution approving the irrigation control update at the Meadows Golf Course.
Yes, so this resolution is really based upon an opportunity. Um, this is a project that's been on the CIP, as you know, for the past few years. And we received, uh, basically a cold call from Toro saying that they were going to run a special on their, on the satellite boxes, which is something that never occurs. Um, we kind of sat on that for a while because we knew that this special was going to expire by the time this hit the CIP. And then, uh, Heartpath Project came in significantly under budget. The cost, considering the savings with the satellite boxes actually now fits in what that original, uh, tiff amount would be. So we thought, well, we would present this as an opportunity for the city to save tens of thousands of dollars on a, on a project that's already scheduled to be completed just two years down the road. So, uh, that resolution has the updated price. My recommendation is to go with the installation quote from libel. Uh, the price from Toro was on the parts only. That's, we had to quote it out on installation, both libelled and Midwest. Uh, libelled for stuff. So the combined total on that project is a hundred and fifteen thousand, one hundred and thirty-three dollars and ninety-eight. Saving us roughly, just in, in cost of satellite boxes, thirty-five thousand, three hundred and thirty-eight dollars, not to mention any type of labor increase, uh, that we may incur in the next two years.
All right. Council discussion, motion?
Make a, uh, make a motion to accept resolution one-twenty-nine of twenty-twenty-four, a resolution approving the irrigation control, uh, update at the Meadows Golf Course.
Second. Motion to second, discussion?
Is, can, can we finally say then now that this is, are we getting to the point where we're done spending money on the Meadows for a while? Are we, other than maintenance? Please, I mean, it's just, I, I.
You have to, anything that's scheduled is, as you know, is listed on the CIP.
There's some irrigation work, but.
This isn't.
This is, this is that project that was scheduled for FY twenty-six, twenty-seven.
Two more years out, though, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think the last, the last major-ish project, um, is something that we've been talking about for a lot of years. We've worked with Eric Schmeckel about trying to control the wa, or the better the water control, water quality control coming out of the golf course. We've got, uh, that pond dredging and streambank stabilization project also listed on the CIP for several years.
My comment would be that we're saving money on the Cart Path Project. And so the money that we're saving on that can go into taking care of this right away. So, I just see this as a, a win and a win, a, a two-win situation. Uh, we're ahead of, we're ahead of schedule, even though we were, had this on the CIP later. We're, we're just, it's just a win-win all the way around.
It, it's, it'll be, again, we won't realize savings like this.
Right.
In two years.
And who knows what the cost's going to be in twenty-six, twenty-seven?
Correct.
Also a good point.
All right, any final discussion? I'll roll.
Clinkhammer.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rice.
Aye.
Del Meyer.
Nay.
Eastling.
Aye.
Motion carries four-one. Next item is resolution one-thirty of twenty-twenty-four, a resolution approving change order number three, the Autumn Drive Reconstruction Project.
Yeah, so change order number three, I guess first a, a quick update on the project before I jump into that. Um, they're in the middle of core out now. Um, I think they probably got about maybe a week left of core out work to do, and then they'll start, uh, prepping for trimming and paving. Um, so we'll just keep everyone up to date on that as we get closer and make sure all the residents, um, know what's going on and they're up on where to, where to go for parking and, and such. So, we'll take care of that. Uh, with that being said, um, jumping back to change order three then. Um, this is something that was discussed actually before construction, I believe even started. It was the reinstallation of the, the fence behind, um, fifty-six fifteen Sunset Drive that initially was installed in, uh, the city's easement area. And at the time that was discussed, council agreed to, uh, cover the cost to reinstall that fence. Um, with that being said, now the fence has been reinstalled and, uh, the cost of that came out to be five thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. Um, so unless you have any questions, we would recommend approval of change order number three.
This was originally discussed, the cost was estimated to be about fifteen hundred to two thousand dollars. And I had requested that we split that fifty-fifty, and everybody said, no, we'll take care of it. And now it's almost three times that amount. So, why is this so high to move a fence ten feet and they're using the existing panel? And has this already been done before we approve the change order? Has the fence been moved?
The fence has been reinstalled, but it was my understanding that this is something that council agreed to do when it was discussed previously anyhow. And this is the price that was quoted by.
Can, can we just, on something like this, where it's a change order that could be controversial, can we at least get a chance to say something before they do it as opposed to approving it after the fact?
What's controversial? How am I supposed to know that?
Well, I mean, it's, the amount, the amount to me is like crazy.
What was the original quote?
Fifteen hundred to two thousand. What they, when they were here, that is what we were told it was approximately going to be a cost. That's, I think that's what the lady had said.
Yeah, uh, that was an estimate though, right? I mean, that.
That was maybe an estimate that she had gotten from somebody. The Eastern Iowa maybe uses a different fence installer. Um, I, you know, I that's the price that they gave her.
Maybe the failsafe, I don't know how it was presented, I don't remember, was not to exceed. Generally, what we do in these situations, we didn't have a firm quote, and then you would be within your rights to not approve. I, I understand, I mean, sometimes we do change orders in the field in interest of time and we can't wait for the next council meeting. If it's significant, we reach out. If it's under the spending limit, I feel it's, we'll approve it on the, at that time and bring it back to council.
This is just one of those where, uh, moving the fence can't be classified as urgent, in, in my mind.
Well.
It's sat open for how long? I mean, so anyway, that's just my consensus.
From the fact that, I mean, part of it was also removing the fence, because this engults not only the re-insulation, but removal of it.
As I recall, Eastern Iowa removed it. They had to just have somebody put it in. This is just to re, to put it back in.
No, this I think, this I believe.
I would imagine they would have included their cost for time it, to remove it and everything in this as well. This is the direct quote from Eastern Iowa.
Well. Hang on a minute.
I, I think the cost is awfully high. I don't know if I ever would have approved it if it would have been that high. But I'm, I hope Ms. Peyton is very happy with the way it turned out.
But I think there's another lesson here as well for, uh, city staff to make sure that they understand where the easements are, the importance of that, so we don't come into these situations in the future. So, we can give correct information to the homeowner and to the, uh, contractor.
I think they're, they're told at the time, in fact, let me back up. They were, they put the fence in and then we didn't tell them where the easement was, therefore they put it there. And we very clearly tell them now, your point, that the easement, we, we're not here, we're not the easement police. So they're responsible for locating and being cognizant of the easement. So we are doing what you're saying. It, it was inferred that the permit was issued, therefore it was okay to put it there. But we did tighten up that, that communication that easements are, we're not going out with a, we're not surveying, they need to put it in the right place. So we did, we did give that false impression, I agree.
How much longer do you think they're going to be doing the Autumn Drive?
Um, I, I'm, they're going to be finishing the project this fall. It'll be done.
October?
I would estimate maybe sometime in October, everything will be complete and, uh, and restoration will be complete as well.
Depending weather, I guess.
Yeah, yeah, but, um, we've been fortunate with dry weather lately, so hopefully that continues.
They're going. They're really doing a good job.
They're moving.
Explain the one point too, is originally they were going to pave half of it and then the other half, but now they're going to pave the whole thing at once. You might want to explain that a little bit too.
Yeah, initially we were going to have two phases for the paving. Um, what they're going to do is actually pave everything in one shot is their plan, full width. Uh, and they're going to leapfrog the four-way intersection of Summer Drive and Autumn Drive. And they'll keep Summer Drive open through Autumn, uh, with rock until they complete all of the concrete work on the three-leg or the three, the T-intersection of Summer Drive and Autumn. And once that's open back up, they'll jump back down and complete the four-way intersection. So all the paving, mainline paving will be complete in one day.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number one-thirty of twenty-twenty-four.
I'll second.
Have a discussion? I'll roll.
Clinkhammer.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rice.
Aye.
Del Meyer.
Aye.
Eastling.
Aye.
Approved five-zero. Next is resolution one-thirty-one of twenty-twenty-four. A resolution approving pay-up number seven for the Autumn Drive Reconstruction Project.
Yeah, pay-up number seven is in the amount of a hundred and eighteen thousand, forty-four dollars and sixty-three cents, uh, primarily for the installation of water main, storm sewer, and, uh, some erosion control related items and a few other things along the way. Uh, unless you have any questions, we recommend approval of this pay request.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number one-thirty-one dash twenty-twenty-four.
More second, any discussion?
Yeah, my discussion point has nothing to do with the pay-up, but just along the line, you, you touched on road completion being done on time. Um, we, we've been blessed with good weather and that can change of course on it, you know? So, are we still looking good even if the weather turns sour on us?
I, I think so. I mean, the rest, the majority of the work is going to be pavement work. Um, you know, it's not like they're going to be tracking mud in and out and have to go to haul sites with dirt every day. So, um, some of the rainy weather, if, if we get some lighter rain days, aren't even really going to impact things too.
Okay.
I, I think we'll be all right.
Thank you, Nate.
I'll roll please. I'm sorry.
Clinkhammer.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rice.
Aye.
Del Meyer.
Aye.
Eastling.
Aye.
Approved five-zero. Next is resolution one-thirty-two, twenty-twenty-four, a resolution approving pay-up number two for Meadows Cart Path Replacement Pro, twenty-twenty-four Project.
Yeah, uh, Valentine Construction's been moving right along. Um, talking with Sam, um, towards the end of last week, he was thinking that they'd probably be getting close to finishing up their work by the end of the month here, so they're, they're getting closer. Um, with that being said, the, the amount for this pay request is just shy of two hundred thousand dollars. It's at one ninety-nine thousand, five hundred forty-three dollars and ninety-four cents. And that's just for path removal and replacements, and then also some of the restoration that they had completed with, with sodding as well. Unless you have questions, we would recommend approval of pay request number two.
Make a motion to accept resolution one-thirty-two of twenty-twenty-four.
Second. A motion second, discussion?
Uh, completion date, I mean, eight.
They're well ahead of that, I would say. It was in October sometime, like mid-October, I believe, so.
Play is still going pretty well. Play on the course is still going well.
Nate, do we have a warranty on the sod even though, once it's on, we're watering it?
Yeah, I believe the, the sod would fall under warranty, but I'd imagine by now you would know if there was any issues with what they've done so far. I'm sure it's.
I just want to know if, with us watering it, if that's going to avoid any of that warranty?
No, that's just typical maintenance with the sod anyways. I don't think it would do that.
Well, it's a big item.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I'll roll please.
Clinkhammer.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rice.
Aye.
Del Meyer.
Aye.
Eastling.
Aye.
That's approved five-zero. Next item G is resolution one-thirty-three of twenty-twenty-four. A resolution approving change order number three for the demolition contract.
The, um, contractor, while they were demolishing twenty-four fifty-three Radford Road, um, discovered there were two additional wells on the property. And, um, those wells, um, need to be, um, dug up and plugged. Unfortunately, to complete that work, they need to bring a crane, driller. And then once the capping and the abandoning is done, then they'll go through and then they'll regrade and restore, um, the property.
Do we have any idea when they're going to, when they're going to do the drilling so that the neighbors know or we have, we know? Is that part of the reason then that they haven't moved their pileage? Because, because they've got to drill that, they've got to drill that well out again. It was.
Water.
Yeah, and this has just got all the junk thrown down in the hole. It has to be fixed. Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Motion?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number one thirty-three of twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion?
So we have, we have capped that though at ten thousand.
It said not to exceed.
What, when I was reading it though, it said they didn't know how much work was involved. So if it does, if it isn't as much work as they think it is, are they going to bill us less or are they just going to take ten thousand? Okay. So it's, so it's not to exceed ten.
They, they don't know what they're going to do.
But I'm just, I'm hoping it can be less right over, they'll just bill us for the ten.
Okay, anything else? Call roll.
Clinkhammer.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Del Meyer.
Aye.
Heasling.
Aye.
Approved five zero. Next we'll move into the annual fiscal report review.
For me, this is yay yay. Um, we are done with the annual audit. I have completed the state annual financial report as well as the street financial report. Um, what I will start, um, reporting to council is I put together financial highlights. Um, these carry forward to, um, the other reports. Um, the annual audit, you know, summarizes the numbers one way, and the street financial report just is the street stuff. And then the state annual financial report rolls things up all in different ways. So you can't just take one report and look at the other report and expect them to equal because of the way they break things down in, um, different ways. Um, but overall, the city is in, has still continues to maintain a strong, um, financial position. Um, our big, one of our big expenditures every year is our capital project expenditures, which this year we had four million, five hundred fifty-one thousand of capital project expenditures. Um, they include, included, um, completing the Hales Mill Road Improvement Project as well as starting the design of the Autumn Drive Project and also starting the design of the Hales Mill Asbury Road Roundabout and acquiring the properties to do that, um, project. Um, we completed the renovations on the Meadows Clubhouse. And then we had some other smaller projects like the Forest Hill Stormwater Project, which was partially completed in last fiscal year and will be have final completion in this fiscal year. Some of the highlights I like to keep council informed of is, um, we received nine hundred and seventy-one thousand in local option sales tax fund. Um, this funding source remained pretty consistent, um, with the prior year. We use our local option sales tax fund to, um, fund police expenditures, to fund snow mo, snow removal expenditures, to fund our streetlights in the community, uh, to fund road capital projects and to fund, um, fire, uh, expenditures as well. Um, the operating funds, the general fund were lower, um, about three hundred thousand dollars. And a lot of that was because we took a bigger, um, ask from our, our TIF funds to support projects. Um, the road use revenue was eight hundred and seventy thousand, which was a slight increase. Um, the city receives a, uh, per capita share on road use tax. Um, water and sewer revenues increased slightly, mostly because of additional users on the system.
Scroll down, please. I can't get it in the word doc, sorry.
Mostly because the additional users on the system as well as increase in our interest income. Um, solid waste revenue increased, um, because of an increase in the monthly solid waste fee, and storm sewer did as well. As far as operating funds, um, public safety, there was an increase of a hundred and twenty-eight thousand from the prior year. Um, police expenditures for wages and benefits was about fifty thousand dollars. And vehicles and equipment was about seventy-eight thousand dollars. The fire and ambulance was pretty steady, and then, um, building and housing, which is our building inspections, um, they increased about twelve thousand dollars. Um, public works was an increase of about twenty-six thousand dollars. Um, street lighting decreased twelve thousand. That was because our streetlight maintenance was a little bit lower than the prior year. But our snow removal was thirty-four thousand dollars more, um, because of, um, salt purchase for de-icing the road. Um, culture and recreation, um, that stayed, um, pretty steady. Our biggest increase was the per capita fee that we, um, pay to the library for library services. Um, parks and rec overall, or parks maintenance overall decreased about three thousand dollars. Also for general government, there was just a slight increase of about five thousand dollars. Um, building expenses were a big, um, part of that. Um, the Meadows Golf Course, um, pro shop increased seventy-three thousand dollars. That was mostly for increases in wages and benefits and inventory purchases. Um, bar and grill increased eighty-nine thousand, six hundred and seven dollars. A lot of that was for wages and salary increases and hours of service for moving to, um, a year-round, um, operation. Um, grounds increased thirty-nine thousand dollars. A lot of that was also due to salary and benefits increase. I would probably add for the Meadows that even though we had these expense increases in the pro shop and the bar and grill, we also saw corresponding increases in revenues, um, for both those departments. Um, road use tax basically increased about thirty-seven thousand dollars. That was debated or divided into salaries about nineteen thousand, five seventy-two and contract mowing in the right of way for about twenty-one thousand dollars. In utilities, the water decreased approximately forty-five thousand dollars. Um, salary and benefits increased twenty thousand. Uh, repair and maintenance increased twenty-five thousand dollars. Capital purchases were twenty-six thousand dollars, but capital projects was a decrease of a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. So we didn't have as many water projects, um, in fiscal year twenty-four. In sewer, the increase was three hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars. Um, this was mostly due to the oxidation ditch project. For three. For three hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. Um, debt service, um, city at the end of the year had five million dollars in general obligation debt um, compared to the previous year, which is an increase of eight hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Increase came from borrowing one million, five hundred thousand dollars for property acquisition. The city's at approximately, um, fourteen percent of its bonding capacity. And the city's outstanding obligation debt limit is three eighty million, eight hundred and forty-nine thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars. So we are nowhere, um, near that point for, um, borrowing funds. There's a couple of graphs that are included that show overall, um, where our receipts come from and then where our, you know, funds go to, and you can see that, you know, capital projects does take up a big portion of that. Council have any questions on that summary or of any of the annual audits, the state financial report and the annual street financial report?
Well, believe it or not, I, I read through all of them and they look very good, so congratulations. Um, the one thing that, uh, the one thing that I'm looking forward to is on the debt. We're, we're, right now we're at five million dollars and over the next, by twenty twenty-nine, that's going to go down by thirty, three-point-six million dollars because we had some big, big payouts coming out for the, um, TIF paybacks. But, uh, you know, it looks, it looks really good, Beth. Thank you.
Any comments on the financial report? Have a motion to accept?